Everybody, we just were the ones that are on the phone. We have Jerome recording and we have David recording here. But other than that, it's just Stephen, Lindy, not Lindy, Darcy, Bill, Alicia who's walking back, and myself.
Okay. Hey Jerome.
I'm gonna say what time we started.
So we're starting at 12. 12. And we're gonna start right in discussion agenda. 2.1, Need for Advice Regarding Next Steps on Budget and Teacher Contracts. So I will let you, Ruben, or Bill lead on this.
Ruben, do you wanna start it off, or you want me to do it?
Sure, I can start off really quickly. So obviously, we all know what happened on Tuesday night. We now find ourselves in sort of an unknown spot. And I was approached by Will from Worcester, and I know that Bill was approached by a couple other folks wondering about sharing some legal counsel about how to move forward. So we don't have a budget, or I'm sorry, we haven't warned a budget, and we need to decide, you know, there's some questions around teacher contracts and agreements, and so we, for this meeting, we don't need to discuss any of that. But what we do need to do is select a legal counsel who we can use, who works on our behalf to give us legal opinions about how we move forward, or more importantly, what our options are around moving forward. Bill, if you wanna extend on that, that would be...
Yeah, one of the things to kinda give you ideas, I sent out, I've created a possible timeline for two different scenarios here. And I emailed it to Ruben and Lindy, you might wanna look at it.
I have it right in front of me.
Yep, I have it.
Jerome, I don't know if you need a copy, I'd be glad to give you one. Because of the way the meeting was adjourned, that in the tightest timeline, it could take anywhere from 90 to 120 days to get to a budget vote for a merged budget. If it was a local school district budget, and I have an error on this piece of paper, because I counted something on one column, I didn't count the other. On local school district budget, you would need 30 days to warrant it, and then run the budget vote, where the error is at the bottom, where I say a total of 60 to 70 days on that side. I included the 30-day challenge period there is for any election, I didn't on the other, on the merged side, so I just cross that out and say it's a total of 30 to 40 days. The critical date here is that in the negotiated agreements you have with the Teachers Association and the ESP, that employees need to be notified by April 15th as to whether we're gonna offer them a contract, or if there'll be a reduction in force of their position. You as a board will need to make that decision to direct me which way you need to go, and I believe that you should have legal counsel to advise you on how you want to go and what the possible ramifications are, not only of negotiations and negotiated contracts, you need to know someone that knows about negotiated agreements, but someone that also knows about Act 46 and the fiduciary responsibilities that you have as a board. I have four possible attorneys that you could talk to, you could pick someone else off that's not on that list. But I would like you to direct me into which attorney you would like to advise you.
Who...
Are any of them currently being used by the SU?
The four that I brought, we've used all four.
Okay.
One is currently being used by the Supervisory Union Board. That was agreed upon by the Articles of Agreement Committee. That would be Chris Leopold.
So you and I talked about this a long time ago, about if we could have some counsel, because the guys involved in the suit had a counsel. Could we just use Colin, or Chris Leopold?
That's your choice as a board.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, because we, they were present of what happened, and they know the history, or is there something that we need to wait and more lawyers?
No.
I'm just asking a question of clarity to...
Yeah, I'm looking, I am at the point with, that I would like boards to direct me onto who they choose as legal counsel. That's what I'm asking you for. I'm not going to select legal counsel for boards anymore.
Are there any other boards that have selected legal counsel?
You are the first to have this discussion. U-32 has a warned meeting for next Monday night at 6:00 PM to have this discussion. Middlesex and Dodie are trying to come to an agreement by the end of today of wanting to warrant a meeting to have this discussion. As Ruben said, Will Baker from Dodie reached out to board chairs to say, hey, should we share this together or not? And that was the question Will had. You could talk about that, what you wanna do, and, you know, but I'm asking each board individually, where you guys stand, what you wanna do, what direction, what supports do you need, and getting you the supports.
And if we said we wanted to share, and say one of the other schools didn't like our choice, and one of them did, we'd be able to share with just that one?
I think any of those possibilities, but you, I would, I would, you decide how you wanna have that discussion. In the past, in Washington Central, the way we've worked, is that's always just been a discussion at the chair level. You may or may not feel comfortable with that happening with the current environment which we're in.
So would it be easier to say, you know, this is our topic, you know, since we're not all having the meeting at the same time, so that we can all discuss? Could we say, you know, Chris Leopold is our first choice, is our second, and it's up there, but our priority is to share it across, and then take our chances?
I would say we hire a legal counsel and say, this is who we've hired, we were first, we're more than comfortable sharing this legal counsel with anyone else that would like to join in.
Okay.
Because if we don't do that today, that means we need to convene another special meeting.
Right.
After the other boards have met.
Oh, I see.
Right?
Well, I was thinking that we were comfortable with those three, and it doesn't matter.
Because this is so timely in my mind, we select legal counsel tonight, and we let all the other board chairs and boards know, this is who we've selected, we selected one because we were first, we didn't wanna have to wait, we're more than comfortable coming to some kind of agreement to share counsel with anybody that's interested.
I have one reservation that I just want to draw out, which is that there are boards that are working on this lawsuit, and I'm concerned that there will be overlap in the legal questions.
I share that concern.
And I'm not sure how inextricably linked those things are. So I'm not 100% comfortable with sharing legal counsel, given the tone and timbre of where we are at this point. I would be 100% comfortable with sharing legal counsel with U-32 board, for example, who is not a party to the lawsuit.
Because we aren't, are the only elementary school not party to the lawsuit, I kind of, in the back of my mind, was a little concerned about that as well.
For clarity, are we the...
Frankly, if I was on the lawsuit side, I would feel the same way.
For clarity, are we the only elementary school not on the...
U-32 too, yeah, but elementary, yes, we're the only one.
So Dodie did decide to join in?
Yeah.
No, late, yeah.
It's okay.
So that said, I think the legal questions that we're going to be encountering, and Adrian contacted Bill as well, I think the legal questions that we're going to be considering are quite similar to what U-32 is gonna be looking at. So I am comfortable with sharing legal counsel with U-32.
Well, Ruben, Ruben, I would say, the legal questions are the same for all the schools, whether you wanna merge or not.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't feel as strong.
I understand that, my worry, well, and it may be overblown, but my worry is that while the legal questions are similar, the end goals may not be.
Well, ultimately, we all have the same goals. I don't know, I don't feel the same way. I think if we're gonna lead, we have to lead in some way, including others. We get the chance to pick whoever we want, since we're going first, but we, we have the same educational outcomes, we have the same responsibilities, like Stephen was just saying. So I don't see what, I'd be perfectly comfortable sharing, especially knowing that if each school has a different lawyer, then it's like, well, so and so is saying this, and so is saying that, and, you know, going back to our meeting on Mondays, like, this lawyer has this opinion, this lawyer has that opinion, it's just like, ultimately, we all want what is best for us as a whole, this is, I don't know, that's just me.
I wouldn't be comfortable sharing with just...
I agree in principle, but in practice, unfortunately, other towns are not demonstrating that very well. So I can be moved on this, I'm just, I'm...
But they already have another lawyer.
And I may have a completely gated view at this point.
They already have another lawyer.
Well, if the legal counsel is strictly about what it means to get a budget under the Act 46, it's going to apply to all of us, and there shouldn't be a bias toward a school has a lawsuit or doesn't have a lawsuit.
Exactly.
In that case, sharing makes sense. And the cost of this is also...
A consideration.
Yeah. So if that's what the legal counsel is about, and not, well, we're still fighting the lawsuit, so you don't need to worry about it, I don't have a problem with sharing legal counsel. If they're looking at the law and how we have to get a budget in a timeframe, or we don't, because the law says we don't, that should be shared.
Bill, do you have a recommendation for exactly what the engagement with the attorney would look like for us?
I'd say it a little differently, because engagement's a pretty open word.
Small groups speak.
So I guess, I look at it sort of from project management, what would the scope of this work for the attorney be?
I believe the attorney should advise you on what your requirements are via these your teacher master agreement, what your requirements are by statute for producing a budget, what your authority is to present a budget to the voters of Eastmont Palyer if you chose to do it locally, or if you, to advise you to what the authority is for a merged budget.
Okay.
Because you need to make a decision.
So with the exception of the third one, those feel pretty horizontal to me, right, across, literally across the boards. And the third one may be more horizontal than I think, other than the biases that other boards might bring to those.
Yeah, I...
So where I was going with that is that if we pretty strictly scope this, this, put narrow parameters on the scope of work that we are asking the attorney to do for us as a group, then my discomfort with sharing legal counsel is probably outweighed by my desire to be efficient and cost-effective.
And I agree with your assessment, Ruben, that we set narrow parameters for legal counsel. We want them for these, you know, I'm gonna generalize, but we want advice on how to proceed budget-wise in the current environment, and potential impacts on the teacher-master agreement, where we find ourselves currently. And it's not about the merits of Act 46, or is merger good or bad, it's specifically, in my mind, it's specific, it's specific to our schools, and we need legal advice to keep our schools operational.
So...
I agree with that, Stephen, sorry.
Besides contracts and budgets is what we had, the next steps to, you know, what are...
So that almost sounded like a motion to me.
Well, I don't think legal counsel's gonna tell us next steps.
No, they will give you advice on where the law is.
We have to decide next steps.
You have to decide what next steps are. You need to be counseled, and I want it in a way that you choose who it is, that you get to hear the advice, you as a board get to make the decisions, you're not asking for anyone to do an interpretation.
No.
You do the interpretation.
Yeah.
All right. So who, can we find, who are the recommendations that you brought with you? Chris and Colin.
So Chris, Chris Leopold, Pietro Lynn, Scott Cameron, and Paul Giuliani can do the fiscal, and I'm not sure he could do the contractual, because he's a fiscal expert in municipal and school law, but I'm not sure, I'd have to ask him about his contractual teacher contract knowledge. And I, I mean, he can read a contract pretty well, but...
So I have a question for the rest of the board. Does anybody have any discomfort with using Chris Leopold?
No.
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 Nope.
So my gut says that he's the logical choice.
Well, he seems to be familiar with our system and people, so makes sense.
Yeah, I agree, like you were saying, we were gonna be efficient, he doesn't have to re-study and figure out where we are at.
So I'll make a motion that we select Chris Leopold.
Should we do it in the action agenda, or you wanna do it now?
Well, I'll be quiet.
Yeah.
If there's more discussion.
So I was gonna, is there any more discussion?
Well, technically, we can make a motion, second and discuss it, but, no, I have no more discussion.
My only statement is, is when we make the motion, is the motion going to include the scope?
My, my motion would include a scope.
Thank you.
Okay. So then, let's move into the action agenda, and let's select the counsel.
So I would make a motion that we select Chris Leopold to provide legal counsel on... So I'm just gonna put this out, and I'll accept friendly amendments, how's that? Because I'm doing this off the top of my head. On legal advice on how to proceed on presenting a budget to our community, and impacts on the teacher, is it called teacher?
Teacher-master Agreement.
Teacher-master Agreement. And I could include more with, with, with our purpose being, we want to, we wanna make sure we take correct action to keep our schools operational.
Can I have a friendly amendment now?
Yeah.
Hang on. With the purpose being taking correct action to keep...
Taking action to ensure that our schools remain operational.
I would, my, for our action...
For our school.
I was gonna say, specifically state the EMS in the motion.
Yeah, because that's all we have authority to do.
Right.
So that it would be to keep our Eastmont Palyer Elementary School operational. So it, it has a person, and it has what I think is pretty narrow scope.
So can we read that motion again?
Yep. Made a motion to select Chris Leopold as legal counsel for how to proceed on presenting a budget to our community, and impacts on the teacher-master agreement, with the purpose of being, taking correct action to ensure that Eastmont Palyer Elementary School remain operational. There's, there's a bit fewer words.
Oh, someone can...
I just, I started typing it. Seek legal counsel for advice regarding next steps on budgets and teacher contracts, and I could put a comma with the purpose. It's just fewer words.
I, my, my, without getting too far into wordsmithing, maybe we put the objective Advice on how to legally operate the school district, given where we are, including the teacher-master agreement and an operational budget for FY 1920.
Is that okay?
We're all in agreement, we're just trying to get the language right, so I'm completely flexible. Alicia, type down what Ruben said, so she...
I'm not getting it all, though. Ruben, can you say that again? Seek, seek Chris Leopold.
I tend to put my objective first, right? So the objective is to maintain the operation of the school.
So I guess you could just flip what Stephen said, put that first part first.
I like that legally.
With the purpose of...
We're looking for legal advice on how to...
On ensuring Eastmont Palyer Elementary School remain operational. Regarding next steps on the budget and teacher contracts.
And I would say, we're looking for, wait, so that's the broad-based advice, how do we keep the school operational, including specific agreement about the teacher mast, sorry, including advice on the teacher-master agreement, and presenting a budget for FY 1920. Right, those are the two...
And I think, for what Ruben just said, I think that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, let me just...
That way, if we find ourselves needing advice somewhere outside of one of those two bullets, it should likely be captured by the overarching objective. But it's still pretty specifically laid out.
Do you want me to read it back to you?
Yeah.
So the motion was made to select Chris Leopold as legal counsel for advice on ensuring Eastmont Palyer Elementary School remain operational, including advice on the teacher-master agreement, and presenting a budget for the FY 1920 school year.
Yeah, that sounds great.
That's perfect.
I would second that motion.
Who was making it?
So that's what it was.
Ruben made it.
Okay, so Ruben and Stephen.
So do you have to withdraw your...
I withdraw my earlier motion.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm still learning.
Yeah. I was just letting them draft the motion together. Okay, and then, Stephen.
Thank you.
All those in favor approving the motion as presented, please say aye.
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 You need to state your name on the phone and your vote, please.
Lindy Johnson, aye.
And Ruben Bennett, aye.
Thank you.
Perfect. Pass unanimously. One question that I would have, is where do we say that we are willing to share? Is this part of the discussion, or...
No, it wasn't part of, I think it's just, I, my feeling is I would trust Ruben on the chair level, if a chair outreach to Ruben and said, we would be interested in sharing counsel, I would be comfortable with Ruben as the chair.
So should we just, should we just say, you know, yeah, that would be in the minutes, that we all will like to share, if possible, if it makes sense.
And you're saying sharing with any?
With any.
Because a lot of your discussion was...
Well, that's not an action agenda item, but it could show in our discussion that...
No, that's just advisory.
And Ruben, is that, is that the feeling you have from the discussion, that we're willing to share legal counsel?
My read of the consensus is that everybody is comfortable with sharing legal counsel within the scope of what we just talked about.
And is everyone on the board comfortable?
Yeah, as long as that's enough direction for you, and Bill, I know that Bill's been asking for more specific, so I'm just trying to be more specific.
You empowered your chair, which I feel more comfortable with.
Okay, good.
And I feel like Ruben has a good sense of what our, what our feeling is on it.
Ruben, you said as long as it's within the scope, and what if the other boards have a different scope?
Then at that point, I would feel pretty strongly that I need to come back to the board for advice.
Yeah.
No, I wouldn't feel strongly. At that point, I would come back to the board for advice.
Good.
And I, you know, generally speaking, I tend to ask for advice more than not, because I don't want to misrepresent the position of the board ever.
So, do we have a, sorry, I'm gonna ask a question. Do we have a sense of how long it would take Chris to kind of give us, or is he gonna need more?
The hardest part's gonna be coordinating calendars.
Okay.
He, Chris is, I've talked to all four.
Yeah.
I haven't talked to Paul, but I talked to the other three, to, and they're like...
Just goes.
Let us know, and you can get everything put together. They know the harder part is what we're trying to do here to all these board meetings, put together, and have you guys decide. I would like to have it, I'd like to have it sometime next week.
So do we meet with him, like as a group?
As a group.
Okay, that was...
So you're gonna let us know?
Yeah, as soon as I can let you know, we'll let you know.
Okay.
But I can't.
So that should be part of the minutes, yeah.
Well, I, I think it would be in our best interest, as well as everyone else that's trying to hire him for advice, if at all possible, if we could have that advice prior to town meeting.
Yeah.
Because it lets us talk more informed to the community.
Prior to Saturday, prior to Saturday, that's...
I hear you.
Well, even if it's not by this Saturday, if it's by town meeting...
You can't make everything, you know, it's calendars.
Yeah.
So I am out of town Wednesday afternoon through Friday mid-afternoon.
Okay, you'll figure it out.
We're just gonna have to, if we can get it quorum, we're just gonna have to do it, so...
I can call them, it's not a big deal.
Okay. I know that we're, you know, ready to adjourn, but I'm wondering if we could, like, share correspondence and just get, just make sure everybody received that email that I sent yesterday, and I feel pretty strongly about not getting a back and forth, even though it's inaccurate, the information that was posted in Front Porch Forum, one option that Stephen likes to...
Well, what I would say, this would be my recommendation to go forward. There wasn't, when you called a meeting to order, there wasn't a discussion of if there needs to be an adjustment to the agenda.
Yeah.
I would be more comfortable with us agreeing to add a discussion agenda item on whatever that is, and then if the board agrees to add that, then I feel like it's more formal.
So who can propose that, or is that not right now?
So we just put it to our next steps, it's just we didn't have a change today.
Well, with the topic being...
Information on Front Porch Forum, yeah.
So you're saying not for today? I guess I missed something.
No, I'm saying that we would amend our current agenda.
For today.
Oh, for today, oh, okay.
Oh, you want it in a future?
No, I just, I didn't know what you were saying, I wanna talk about it today.
Hi, Ruben, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. So we would have to amend our agenda for today.
Okay.
To add a discussion item about Front Porch Forum communication. Is that what it is?
Yes. So do I need a motion for that, or can you just, since I didn't call it at the beginning, because I didn't...
Meeting hasn't been adjourned, so I don't know why you can't, there's no reason you can't go back.
So 2.2...
I've never had, I've never overseen a meeting where agenda items were voted on, have you, Ruben?
No.
No.
It's more of a courtesy.
Yeah.
Okay, 2.2.
So...
I just wanna quickly point out that we have a presentation that we're preparing for town forum. And I find it likely that much of the information that people might be seeking will be in that presentation.
I agree. Especially if it involves a new, whatever people wanna call it, district budget versus an Eastmont Palyer budget discussion.
So the presentation that you're working on right now is basically just our budget, right?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
The presentation that you're working on right now, the last time we spoke, it was, it was mainly just showing, you know, where, the pie, that we stay basically in instructional, and, you know, just how we budget it? So are you saying that you pre...
That's correct.
Okay.
But it's not a budget of what Eastmont Palyer voters are used to.
Correct, but there's gonna be questions about... Correct, but there's gonna be questions about, what I, my question was not as much about that, but as much as the information posted in Front Porch Forum yesterday.
So then we may want to decide whether we want to include a summary of where we are right now in that same presentation.
That, so that's what I was saying. We, we should include something on Act 46, just where we are. Especially by then, we have some advice from the legal counsel. We should have a little slide. I'm happy to help put that together, but just where we are, if there's any questions.
My recommendation is...
So I guess what, what I was saying was that I, I think this town forum and the presentation therein is the appropriate vehicle for delivering that information.
Yeah.
Ruben, are you sharing?
Rather than engaging in a point-by-point back and forth, I think as a board, we would be wise to summarize where we are, how we've gotten here, and, and be very factual about the process that we're following at this point, to the degree that we can.
And Ruben, what I was gonna suggest, and this is just my feeling, we, we do a very short, limited in scope presentation on where we're at right now in Act 46, because my impression is that there's gonna be more questions and, and keep our presentation fairly concise, fairly short, completely factual, and then have accumulated as much information. So what's going on in some of the subcommittees, what's going on with the transition board, all these different things. Let's not present it, but let's have that information available. So if people ask specific questions, we can respond as best we can. I think if we try to anticipate what all the questions will be, it'll be a three-day presentation.
Yeah.
Well, that's fair.
Ruben, are you, in the past, I think you've shared something on Front Porch Forum before, the link or something. Are you doing that this year, or just at town meeting?
I hope to, and like these things often do. So I have not gotten, Bill, did I, was Lori gonna send just those basic slides over?
No, that's not the plan we had had. You were gonna, you said you could develop it, and if you needed information, you would ask me.
I was just gonna just take it out of last year's.
Yeah, and then you were gonna ask me for, to help fill in questions, which I was willing to do, because I was trying to help keep Lori from doing a lot of extra.
So what, so then, got it, okay.
But I'm still, you know, I'm around, I'm willing to give you all that support, Ruben, of, of getting the information. So if you, even if you took the power...
Send you the specific pieces of information that I need.
Yeah, if you went through there and just even took the PowerPoint and highlighted, give me this year's figures for this, this, and this.
Exactly.
I can find them for you. I'm just trying not to task things to Lori right now.
Yep, correct.
Okay, so, so what I'm, what I'm, the feeling that I'm getting is that you guys are okay not getting back and forth to Front Porch Forum. I shared a letter with you guys, the correspondence with Susan Clark, and, and if anybody has questions, they will call any of us on that specific post.
I, I feel like our intent has been clear for years that as individual board members, we are not gonna engage in, in social media discussions. As an individual board member, we can't do that.
Yeah, that's how I felt, but I just wanted to make sure.
Might not be bad to, to put a post.
The minutes.
No, go ahead.
I agree with that sentiment, I guess. I've already been approached by two people about that. I don't want to get into a back and forth. There's nothing about it that I, I try to, I want to engage in. But my point of view on this whole, that whole post was, you know, from my perspective as a board member and as a public person, is when somebody approaches us with a suggestion or a recommendation, that we at least consider it. And, and I would hope that the community agrees on that. And we did not make that recommendation to go forward. We made the recommendation to potentially, hey, review, review options. That's all I think we had said.
Yeah, we were gonna put it for them, for the board to decide.
So I guess my point is, if we do start fielding 25 calls, I would like to post something, a little rebuttal saying it wasn't, we're not recommending to go away from...
Well, I tucked the floor on the way in, and what, what I would say would be the best way is refer them, so the minutes to the meeting where this topic was discussed are located at these places. As a board member, you could say, if you're unable to go, I'm happy to print out a copy of them and give you those minutes. And then you can see what was discussed in the context of what it was discussed in.
Okay, yeah.
Or, or the links.
Or the links.
We can, yeah, we could...
Because at this point, it's not even a school board.
Yeah.
It doesn't even come to the school board.
I think that was really, that is really hard to, why I was feeling that...
That way, you're saying, here's the information that I have, here's where it is. And the other thing I'd say, so, I'm sorry, I'm talking...
They'll get hit.
So I, I feel like I've had experience with lots of scenarios. To me, it's different if an individual community member comes up to me and asks me something. I'm still gonna have to be, you know, if it's something that's for an administrator to decide, I'm gonna say you need to see the administrator, or, you know, what the process is. But a one-on-one is different than a, a social media post. So I mean, I, in my mind, there's a big difference between my next-door neighbor coming over and asking me, you know, what went on, as compared to doing a social media post. You know, it would be, in my mind, a social media post is if I wrote an article to the Times Argus, you know. To me, that's different, and I'm, then I'm representing a large group to a large group as compared to a one-on-one with a person. But in this case, I refer them to the minutes.
Lyndy?
The focus of that had to do with something in the Articles of Agreement, which we haven't voted on or been a part of yet. So nothing's been passed of what that...
And it was also a meeting of the Articles of Agreement Committee, which we, as a board, have no position on.
Right.
Yeah, well, and, and the information was inaccurate even, you know, so, so yes, we had put in a recommendation, but she didn't even understand what town representation.
But as a board, we don't even know that.
Right.
Yeah, so it...
So I, I think...
Again, if they were, if they're referred, if they're referred to the minutes of a meeting that are...
...what we as a board have talked about, which is that we haven't.
They're referred to the, the root source of a, a minutes of a meeting. I think that's the best we can do.
Okay.
I agree.
So anything else? Otherwise, 4.0, and we can adjourn.
I have nothing else.
Okay, all those in favor adjourned the meeting at 12:50, please say aye.
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 Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.